Stephanie Butler would like to come to speak to the board about curriculum.
Hello, Stephanie Butler, and I wanted to come up and talk tonight. There's a lot, a lot going on in this district right now. And the more digging I do, the more I seem to find. And questions are, you know, I want to know, you guys approve the curriculum, but to what extent do you oversee the curriculum that's being taught to our, to our children right now? It, it's different, it varies by what school. And, you know, the only way that I'm able to get in and see the things that I do find are with my daughter's login. Everything is locked up so tightly away from the parents. And the more I find out, the more I, I realize why that is. You know, the, this SEL, this, all this stuff maybe was started with good intentions, but what it's doing right now is causing division. It's causing more racial divisions than was prior. It's pitting, you know, groups of students, and this is from the students, against each other at particular schools. So, you know, each group sticks with, you know, with their own kind. So it's kind of having the opposite effect. And my question is, when are we going to take back the, the authority over the curriculum? And why don't we focus on math, reading, writing? We've got 30% of kids, 30% of children proficient in anything across the board. It doesn't matter what school it is in this district. And our English learners are at 3 and 4%. So what are we doing here creating social justice warriors? It's not our job, it's not your job, it's not a teacher's job to do that. Their job is to teach them math, reading, writing, how to be productive, you know, members as far as, you know, can they do the job when they get to college? You've got teachers treating classes as such job interviews. So for example, math class. Who has writing? I don't know if anyone here has had writing in their math, but I don't, I didn't understand how it correlated until I had met with the teacher and the counselor. And I was told that he treats it as if it's a job interview. So basically, if your boss asks you if you know how to do your job, you should be able to explain it. So if you know the math, you should be able to write it out. So I don't agree with that. And I had to fight for my son, who was deserving of a C in pre-Celt II by all calculations. I, I had to go in and listen to the grading.
Please wrap up your comments.
Yeah, I had to go in and listen to the grading scale, which made no sense, only to get a call later on that the curriculum reviewer went through it and agreed that something was wrong. And that she moved the, the grade from a D minus to a C, which is what he actually earned. So we need to take the reins back and control what's going on.
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
Yes, I, I'm not done yet. But we need to take the reins back and.
Time's up, we have to be very strict on time tonight. We've got so many people that want to speak.
Well, that's the thing though, Ms., Ms. President, that, that's what happens. Remember when you all told me there was going to be a bathroom policy down the line? It, it, one standard, whatever happened with that? Nothing, that's what happens here, absolutely nothing, so.
Thank you for your, thank you for your thoughts.
Mrs. Masra would like to come to speak to the board about administration. Mrs. Masra? No?
Good evening, I'm Asmaan Masra, but I'm succeeding my time to Faiza Nasr. Yep, and I put a card in there already. My name is Faiza Nasr. Okay, so I actually plan to attend here tonight to follow up on something that I requested from you as board members a few months ago. However, I am like shaken by some of the things that are being said in here. I am appalled at what is happening in this room. The amount of gaslighting happening here is very toxic and healthy as a community. I stand here in front of you, not to represent my personal interest, but I'm here to advocate for my students, my neighbors, my community, my Yemeni community too. I feel that I need to send a message to our students in this district as they are the victims and we are the adults that are supposed to protect them at all times. We as your parents, as your community members, as your educators, have an obligation to inform you that you should feel nothing but pride in who you are, where you are from, what food you eat, what country of origin you are from, and most importantly, feel comfortable in your own skin and bring your whole self to school. Also, we need to make it very clear after tonight, and after so many parents speaking their minds to our children, that adults in this district have a job to do, which includes making everyone feel safe, feel comfortable, and supported. All the praises that we heard tonight are simply a job of any admin. You are here to make progress in our children, you are here to create programs, you are here to empower them. I didn't hear anything exceptional that went out of his job or out of his way. It does not justify anyone despite behavior, grades, color, nationality, you get the point, that the only time an adult in this district is to touch you is when they're shaking your hands or patting you on your back. Period. Our performance CPR, pretty much that's all. We cannot sit here and pretend and continue to ignore the concerns and say, it's just one kid. One kid is too many, one kid, special ed kid on the bus is too many. One kid is enough, okay? So as a community, we continue to hear about many issues rising. And it seems these concerns are being ignored. I am aware that the board members are elected bodies to make decisions. However, my concern about the integrity and the ethical judgment of this board has immensely increased over the last few meetings. The impression that your community is getting from you is that you are passive elected officials sitting in your seats. I am proud of those who engage and speak their minds and share their experiences and their stories because it reminds them that they are connected and they are invested. You are elected to engage in these concerns, ensure things are brought up and are followed through, asking questions, hearing from all sides, fostering a trusting and safe environment for your constituents. If this is something that is not being done, then honestly, you have no business sitting in those seats. Today, I come with a few concerns. And I will be stating and more, more than happy to state some few possible solutions because I'm a solution-oriented person. We have a track record of district employees who have made stereotyped statements, you can call them whatever you want, but at the end of the day, it's stereotypical, it's racist, it's bigoted, it's all the above.
It's unacceptable.
It's unacceptable. As a prior employee, I have heard comments from staff referring to students as these kids, those kids. We need to use a different set of words. Addressing students' challenges or weaknesses such as, our students need this, or our students have a difficulty with some of these issues. Those kind of, that kind of language is very important even among us staff and admin. It doesn't mean there's no students or no parent that we can say those kind of things. They are unacceptable. Or a specific example is when we use religion as part of the conversation when, when addressing inappropriate behavior, such as saying, weren't you just fasting last month? Why are you doing this and that and so on? I'm Muslim. It is absolutely wrong to use that type of comments to shame our children. At the end of the day, we are the adults, they are the children who are still developing in all areas of their lives. They are not to be held, you know, and spoken to that way. Any admin or teacher that does not know how to only and only honor a student's culture or country of origin should not be mentioning that person's culture if it isn't relevant to the teaching until they know how to address it in the most productive and empowering way. We have admin and staff who are directly working with students one-on-one and in collective settings who do not have proper training, could be traumatizing them with the way they speak to them that come across as microaggression, stereotypical remarks, this is district-wide. There is no culture of accountability when it comes to staff making sarcastic remarks about student culture. When addressing such marks, we cannot look at the intention, but rather we should focus only on the impact it has on our children. And with saying that, everyone is entitled to feel the way they, whatever they want to feel when comments like these are made. We are not to come here and say, oh, it's okay, he, you know, it wasn't meant to this or it wasn't meant that way, no, we have to look at the impact.
Thank you for your comments.
Imagine the word Yemeni was replaced with African-Americans, Asian-Americans, Hispanic, then what? This cannot be ignored as well.
Next, Mr. Alshohati. Mr. Alshohati? He would like to speak to the board about administrative accountability.
Good evening. My name is Ramsey Alshohati, and I am a parent to the Dearborn, to Dearborn School's students. Many things have occurred that have been upsetting, and there appears to be no true accountability shown by our district or district's leadership. Former staff members have been speaking at board meetings discussing a culture of poor leadership, harassment, and retaliation. And our superintendent deflects, minimizes, and dismisses their experiences instead of holding transparent discussions and finding solutions to remediate the issues. A special education student almost dies on a bus and our superintendent deflects blame on a third-party bus vendor and takes no accountability for the incident or aftermath. And now, public documents of an investigation conducted by Dearborn School's own HR department shows an administrator guilty of creating and engaging in a culture of ethnic discrimination and intimidation and evidence of a physical attack on a student, and yet our superintendent responds by gifting the individual another position. Our district responds to their own findings of guilt by using taxpayer money to protect an abusive administrator instead of using taxpayer money responsibly, instead of using taxpayer money responsibility on our students. By protecting someone that has shown pattern of ethnic discrimination, our superintendent is showing us that our kids do not matter, their safety and mental health, their self-worth, none of that matters. What is more important is protecting his own circle of administrators instead of the kids. These actions should, show a true lack of leadership and accountability. I ask the school board to do their duty and provide true oversight and block these harmful actions. No one should be above the rules. I ask the school board to really dig deep into the leadership the superintendent has shown and gather feedback directly from families and staff. Figure out what is really happening behind closed doors instead of relying solely on the information provided from ASC. Hold the district's administration accountable for their negligence and the harm that it is causing our community. If you do nothing today, then you are just as guilty of putting our students last.
Next, Ms. Laura Lee would like to speak to the board about books.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to us, hearing us. I've heard a lot of things tonight. I've lived here 67 years. I'm a Dearborn resident. I went through all the mayors, I've seen it all, and I cannot believe what I am hearing. One of my friends said to me one day, when all is said and done, there's more than, there's more that's done and not said and vice versa. I agree. I have got a friend with me tonight that's going to bring up something very, very important, and it's very delicate, and it is happening in other districts. I have been to other school meetings. I cannot believe what I've seen, I feel like I'm in a twilight zone, if anybody can remember that. It's very serious, and it's got to be taken serious. And our kids really need to be protected. It's the most important thing in the world. If you can do nothing else in your life, you have to protect your kids. You guys have a job, you've got to protect these kids. I have lived in Dearborn a long time, and I've seen all the changes, all the different stuff. And I cannot believe what I'm seeing, and I was horrified at the last meeting I went to. It wasn't this one, but I'm going to let my friend take care of it, so introduce yourself.
Thank you, Laura, I'm Crystal Paulson. Last month, the meeting alone was very hard, I think, on all of us, honestly. So I made it a point because somebody on the board told me if I had an idea, my idea should be heard, but it needs to be a full idea. So I met with our superintendent with my ideas that could hopefully help the autism program. Not only did he take the time, Special Needs Director was with us. I gave them homework, I presented them as if I was selling them something. I, I took time because I'm a mother, especially a mother of an autistic child. As mothers, we solve issues. As a community, all of us, we are mothers. We solve issues. So I took it upon myself to figure out if I could help solve something just so simple that a mother would not have to worry anymore. Okay. The superintendent, he met with me, he was polite, he didn't rush me. Him and this Special Needs Director, they went over everything. But during all this, okay, with SELs, my friend spoke about the SEL and the social justice. With everything being said tonight, it's okay. It's either I'm going to get backlash or I'm going to get supported. But with the summer program that's coming on, or coming into, starting shortly after the school gets out, some of the stuff that I found is very alarming as a mother, and I felt like I should actually bleach my eyeballs for as much time I spent digging and digging and digging, like my friend said. I had a presentation that was done in Lansing by our fellow Mama Bear. She okayed it for me to use it and to give it to the board. But also during this, I was able to connect the platform that would be used for the elementary schools. And I'm sorry for anybody, but as a mother, and if a child got hurt or something happened, I couldn't be okay with this, couldn't. Why would penny gardens need to be doing this? What does it have to do with their body parts? Why would the SEL, why would the SEL with the national education, our sexual education? Everything that has anything to do with SEL also deals with CSEL, which is funded by Mark Zuckerberg. I can name him, he's not a part of it, Bill Gates. Why are they a part of this in our children's education? I'm sorry, do you know what a blesser is? I found out a blesser, do you guys want to know what a blesser is? Somebody that has sex with an underage child and that person risks, gives that child gifts, money. These videos, I really wish I could show you, but it's bad. They have the sounds, the masturbation, the everything. And I'm sorry, these people, not everybody, but there's people in that crowd that they are trying to push the agenda on our kids. Me and my girlfriend have been trying to expose this entire year, but when you bring the little kids in this, this is a boundary. You're either with the kids or stay out of the district. That's it, because you're pedophiles, groomers. I mean, honestly, after watching the video with your class, process is using the following discussion questions. Did anything in this video surprise you? How has watching this video changed your ideas about porn?
To wrap up your comments, please.
If you come across porn, how might you respond, react now that you have this information? It does not belong in our schools. And ladies, ladies, this does not belong with our daughters. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, you've addressed the board, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you.
Next, Dr. Joshua Tynan would like to speak to the, Tynan, I'm sorry, apologize, to speak to the board about prior board meetings, procedures, and perception.
Evening, trustee superintendent, it's Tynan.
I apologize.
No problem, I'm called lots of things, you know, so it's no big deal. Wow, intense board meeting, I'll say that, jeez, oh, pizza. But for me, you know, that's what I like about Dearborn is we have an opportunity to come and voice our opinions, and we all have the opportunity to grow. Personally, I find Dearborn, having been to many other districts, to be one of the most progressive districts that are around the area. As a whole, we service 20,000 students in a very progressive manner. You go look at some other districts and you're going, wow, we did that 10 years ago, you know? Obviously, from hearing people speak, there's a lot of growth that needs to be happened. And with that, that's an issue that I wanted to bring up or that I had noticed last time. I appreciate the board speaking on it last, at the beginning of this meeting. I won't say last night, it's been so long, you know? But at the last board meeting, I felt like there was implied performance concerns with a, one of our staff members and then with our superintendent. Obviously, we know that there are not concerns with those, and that's what stayed at the beginning of the meeting. However, the implication was there, and that's an issue that we're having, I feel, as heard throughout the evening, is perception. And when that perception is skewed and it goes to the court of public opinion, such as social media, it creates confusion and anger in multiple ways. Because of the confusion that was caused at the last board meeting, we did have a member resign or pull back from contention for the executive director position. Me personally, that impacts my job, because now we don't have that executive director to fill that spot. I felt like that person was just a phenomenal, phenomenal human being, not only in their ability to communicate and express themselves, but the ideas that they were bringing for the district. There is an area, if you look at all of education, not just Dearborn Schools, but across the board, it's stagnant in many ways. The person that had removed their name from contention was ready to take it to the next level and bring Dearborn to a space further. Yes, there's a lot of people applying for jobs and moving to other districts, but the quality is very low. Dearborn does a very good job of building within. They have a very strong program of building leadership from within and promoting that, and that is done through Dr. Maleko. Do I agree with everything Dr. Maleko does? Absolutely not. But is he open to hearing my suggestions? Is he open to talking it through 100%? What I appreciate about the district and what I appreciate about tonight is there's systems in place so we're all heard. And we can argue, we can discuss, we can leave, we can leave angry, we can come back and re-discuss, and we can grow from it. I feel personally like Dearborn has a lot of opportunity for growth. I've grown a lot from it.
Dr. Tynan, can I ask you to wrap up, please?
One last thing and I'll finish. You know, I'm a product of Dearborn, and obviously, I'm having a different experience than some other people tonight. There's a gentleman who's referenced it about a half hour ago. I was in an accident about six years ago. South end came and visited me, north end came and visited me, west end came and visited me, east end came and visited me. When Dearborn needs to come together, Dearborn comes together. Obviously, we're splintered right now, and we can do things as certain from the board and the superintendent and down to bring that forward. So as one board member says, when you puke, puke up. And if we do that behind the closed doors and argue, then we can present a unit front and consistent communication. Thank you.
We need to extend, it's almost 10 o'clock, we need to extend the meeting for 15 minutes.
Motion to extend the meeting 15 minutes.
Got a motion from trustee Thorpe, a support from trustee Barry. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry, trustee Dambrosio.
Yes.
Trustee Mosib.
Yes.
Trustee Petrikov.
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe.
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes, President McDonald.
Yes.
Next, Mrs. Ms. Mary Elaine would like to come to speak to the board about the meeting 5/9/22 Superintendent Performance and Evaluation.
On May 9th, 2022, trustee Adal Mosib pulled item 30, which was apparently a personnel item. That, he asked for a closed session on that item. His actions gave the employee no notice, no due process, no fundamental fairness. The audience was left wondering what was going on. Those of us who were watching didn't know what it meant. Was it a closed meeting with a real discussion on personnel? Was it an attempt to stain the employee or was it an ambush? Once trustee Mosib was told that he could not have a closed session on the employee without their consent, he then substituted a closed session on the superintendent. I believe this was a bait and switch. Did the superintendent then become the object of the meeting when trustee Mosib was told that it was illegal? What was the purpose of that closed session? Because it was certainly not evaluation, I'm guessing. There is an evaluation process, there are procedures, and those need to be followed, of course. It appears that they were not. And then the board proceeded to go into a closed session on the topic of the superintendent without a vote, apparently to mollify trustee Mosib and find out what was going on. I believe this was a violation.
Can we have quiet, please, in the back of the room? Apologize.
Yep. I believe this was a violation of the Open Meetings Act, which I would like to remind everyone is Michigan law. It's not MASB policy, it's not something you have a choice on. Seems clear that the board does not know the Open Meetings Act and should train itself immediately. I suggest a retreat with a competent expert, MASB, an attorney, so the citizens don't have to get up and wag their fingers and, or file complaints, which can be done also. Board needs to hold a retreat to teach itself relationships, roles, and comportment as a board. We elect you to lead, not to slur people. Don't air your petty gripes, dislike of staff or employees, and egotism in public. I ask you to think also about the superintendent's position. Every year, Michigan starts its school year with 15 to 20% of the districts having no superintendent, no leadership. Dearborn is a unique community, it is a very difficult job to fill, we all know that. A dysfunctional board makes it even harder. Many candidates would not even consider coming here. Within my memory, we've had searches for superintendent and for president at the college, and we've had only four candidates who were even viable. Superintendents, I am wrapping up. Superintendents are not supermen or superwomen, they're just people. They do not come from planet Krypton, and we need to, we need to consider what does Dearborn need? Needs three things primarily, ethics, competence, compassion. Dr. Glenn Maleko has shown these over 27 years with our district. He has done a fine job, and our district has helped hundreds of thousands of students.
Thank you.
It's the essence of foolhardiness to not consider this. Some members of the board jeopardize our community, our property values, and our city by irresponsible talk and behavior. I demand that you give up petty aspirations and small interest groups for the common good.
Thank you for your comments, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
Do not be educational leaders, not neighborhood gossips, thank you.
Next, Sue Lattich, teacher at DHS, would like to come to speak to the board in support of the superintendent.
President McDonald, trustees, and superintendent Maleko, thank you for the time. I'm Sue Lattich, I'm a teacher of students of autism at Dearborn High. And I just wanted to speak to our, your one and only employee and how I have found him to be willing to listen. He's very visible in the community and in the schools. And I just wanted to say that I fully support him, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Jane Maza would like to come to speak to the board about the superintendent.
Hello. Good evening, President McDonald, Dr. Maleko, board trustees. Actually, I also have a folder, but I am going to hand it to you because people signed it, and they were very happy to sign it. And these are letters in support of our superintendent. Thank you. I'm not going to take too much time except to say I want to thank the board. I want to thank our staff, mostly our teachers and all our instructional people. We have gone through this year. It's been slog at times getting through COVID, but I'm really honored to be the president of the D F T and to know that these teachers have really worked so hard this year. And I'm so happy that we're getting to the end of the year of a good year, so almost out of COVID. And I thank the board for their support, and I thank our superintendent for his support. Have a great rest of the summer, everyone. Take care.
Thank you.
Next, Al Larini would like to come to the board to speak about the superintendent.
Madam President, board members, Dr. Maleko, good evening. It's nice to see you all. I would like to speak to you this evening about my support of our superintendent, my several reasons for supporting him. Our superintendent is the most enthusiastic and energetic supporter of the proposition Students First. And this is not just a slogan or a gimmick, because in every conversation I have had with him or his administration, excuse me, in every discussion about policy and in every protocol that's implemented, Students First has been our guiding principle. Now, there are those who might say, of course, Students First. We're a school district. That's easy to promote. Well, let me tell you, it's not. Our district, like every district in our state and across the country, has limited resources, and competing for those resources are many different interests, my own group included, whose advocates speak passionately for certain effects and results. Amid that whirl of voices, our superintendent, in a kind and humble manner, reminds us to remember our guiding principle that students come first. I believe that the students in this district have the most effective advocate in their corner and are better off as a result. My second reason is his practice of collaboration. Dr. Maleko treats us as equal partners as we address the many issues that confront our district. What I admire about his management style is that his desire to collaborate is not simply based on the fact that it is the most effective way of leading others, but rather, this particular style is truly an extension of his personality. He collaborates with us because that is who he is as a man. I believe the results of his leadership in this regard are impressive, especially with the trials of COVID. Lastly, our superintendent is a resolute protector of employees' rights. Each employee of our district has various rights protecting them from unfair and unjust treatment. Dr. Maleko, through his actions, proves to me that he believes, as I do, that an injury to one is an injury to all and that, and that he is willing to stand up for those whose rights are threatened. For today, the affected employee may not be in this room, but tomorrow, it could be any one of us. It is comforting to know that the CEO of our district is so reliably committed to observing and safeguarding our rights. Who among us would want it any other way? Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you, and I hope to see you all again in a more informal setting.
Next, Mr. Michael Lowe would like to come to speak to the board about the superintendent.
President McDonald, Dr. Maleko, trustees. My name is Mr. Michael Lowe, and I represent the Dearborn Schools Operating Engineers Association. This evening, I would like to extend a message of support for our superintendent on his staff and on behalf of myself and my fellow engineers. His leadership skills are evident to us in his level of communication to staff, students, and the community that we serve. Through troubling times, he has maintained an honest and forthright approach in dealing with issues across all platforms and has given us the necessary support required to maintain our buildings. We, the D S O E A, look forward to many more years of partnership and following his leadership. Thank you for your time.
Next, Mr. Hassan Jafar. I apologize, I'm trying to read.
You're right.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Jayfer. I apologize. I'd like to speak to the board.
I'll correct her.
Good evening. President McDonald, board members, and superintendent Dr. Maleko. My name is Hassan Jafar. And I stand in front of you this evening for two reasons. Reason number one, to express my gratitude for the wonderful 40 years of service I spent with the district. Reason two, to express my support for Dr. Maleko for his vision, leadership, and leadership. During my years of service, I was inspired and guided by seven superintendents. I would like to mention their names for the record. I'll start with Dr. Lund, Dr. McLennan, Dr. Hughes, Mr. Stuf, Dr. Aris, Mr. Wisted, and Dr. Glenn Maleko. These superintendents, with the support of the Dearborn Public Schools Board of Education, have shaped the history and legacy of our district for the past 50 years. Our current superintendent has dedicated his entire professional career to the service of Dearborn Public Schools as a teacher, assistant principal, principal, H R director, and superintendent. John Maxwell once said, "A leader is one who knows the way, goes the way, and shows the way." Dr. Maleko has a proven track record, and most importantly, has successfully guided and led the district during the most challenging global crisis in our modern human history, the COVID-19 crisis. May I remind you that lockdowns, remote learning, masking or not masking, demanded absolute leadership. Our teachers stepped up. Our support staff stepped up. Our principals and central office staff stepped up. Business was not as usual. And as the captain who was steering the ship during these tumultuous, tumultuous times, Dr. Glenn Maleko, we all know that he led with pride and dignity. It's easy to criticize and easy to point fingers. However, I implore you, as representatives of the people of the city of Dearborn, to continue supporting Dr. Maleko's vision and mission for Dearborn Public Schools. I'm honored to know most of you as parents of my former students and as community leaders. I'm confident that you will recognize my support and the support of the majority of parents and employees for Dr. Maleko's and his leadership. Experience, fortitude, vision, and proven leadership define Dr. Maleko's current tenure. Don't fix what's not broken, please. You're entrusted to make the right future decisions for our district. Dr. Maleko's role is and should be and should continue to continue as an integral part of that future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jafar.
Next, Walid Fadama would like to come to speak to the board.
We're gonna have to extend the meeting again.
Motion, extend the meeting.
Support.
We have a motion by trustee Berry, supported by trustee Thorpe. We have a roll call.
Trustee Berry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Mosib?
Yes.
Trustee Petrichoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts? Yes. President McDonald.
Yes.
Walid Fadama would like to come to speak to the board about the superintendent. Next. Raiza Nassar would like to come to speak to the board about Oh, nevermind. There she was. Mrs. Mohammed would like to come to speak to the board about teacher misuse of school platform for personal agendas.
Good evening and hello, everyone. I'm a parent of a student at Henry Ford Early College, and I came here to speak about the division that the platform misuse has created between our kids.
Please don't use names. Oh, I thought, I'm sorry. I thought I heard a name.
I think it's hard to hear you.
You can pull your mask on if it makes it easier.
So yesterday, one of the teachers sent on Remind, which is a school platform and a tool to send for homework, sent all the kids to come rally up for the principal for, you know, the allegations that had come against him, and that is not professional, and it's not ethical. And the letter we were sent by, for the apology, for the Yemeni community missed all symbols of empathy and remorse towards students and all the parents and staff who suffered the mistreatment who were from the Yemeni community. My son was in the cafeteria that day, and he heard so many times that South Enders, they were referred to as South Enders, and they were called as hungry people because they come from Yemen, even though my kid was never, like, he was, he was born here and he was, he was raised here. And I don't know, how, how is that like? And some of the staff were there, and nobody stopped him. And that happened over and over, even in schools. And the fact that he had a violation on February 20, 2020, I mean, where were you? He should have had a training. It shouldn't have been escalating that much. We shouldn't have been like pointing against each other, Lebanese against Yemenis, against Iraqis. It shouldn't have happened. He should have had a training how to speak well to students. But obviously, the problem is the people of the authority feel comfortable to use school platforms for personal agendas. School administrations repeatedly disregarded complaints and sided with the principal over and over, refusing to meet with parents or just attend for four minutes, storm the room, and leave. Excuse me, I'm very nervous. All that shows that the school administration failure to contain the concerns of certain parents, especially if they come from a different ethnicity, which basically, in this case, is Yemeni. The H R and administration were complicit because they know that this verdict happened and all this investigation happened in 2020. My kid was still in junior high in 2020. And for 2021 school year, it was a virtual school year. So there's no way that the principal A or B knew that he was a Yemeni online. You know what I mean? So I don't know, like, this year, it was like constant, constant disregard of the parents' concerns. And my friend here has came to you very, various times. It wasn't her first time. She didn't just escalate the thing over to the police until the touching happened. And then we have audio came from the students, and people came forward with even the picture. The student in, in the picture was not, like, his face wasn't visual, and yet, the principal had his hand on him, and that was not addressed on the board. I don't know, like, Dr. Maleko, I want to know, like, your answer for that. Like, where were you on 2020? That should have even happened. He should have had a training, and that was the end of it. I know that he has good intention for other parents and other students as well. Why that good intention did it come to my son and all the other kids in the Yemeni community? Don't you feel that that is unfair? And then the teacher that pointed out kids against kids.
I need you to wrap up your comments, please. Did you fill out a blue card or something? Okay, then that's.
So the teacher that sent the kids, the message on Remind, was she allowed to? You tell me, was she allowed to rally for Principal A to come here and speak forward and show support? That's exactly what she said on the message. It was to be, supposed to be just for homework, and that's it. School stuff.
Will we be able to get an answer from you guys concerning this?
It's since yesterday morning.
Is it okay to have?
Did anybody, did anybody say something to her? Did anybody address her?
Is it good policy to use the platform to rally kids to support a person who's already been charged or convicted or however you want to say it?
Exactly. Now, the problem was that with Principal A.
They don't know all the details.
Now, it's against, it's, it's a community against a community. I mean, we're, we're all have one race. We're all Arabs. But the thing that, the, the thing that divided us was the misuse. And then someone pointed out using social media for political reasons. The fact is, the fact is that the social media for Yemenis didn't come out. It was a hush-hush situation between, you know, enclosed doors, and it was just emails to the parents until the lady came on Remind rallying for support. And then, then the advocate that we know, you know, that the mother asked for help, went on social media. And she didn't say anything political. It was the email sent from the school. It was the email that was sent from a school. We didn't call him racist. The, the paper said that. The letter said that, and he admitted guilt. And what is the remorse? How did he, how did he feel remorse since 2020? Tell me, what is the remorse? If he's still telling our kids that you're hungry because you came from Yemen. Thank you very much.
Next. Mr. Next, Mr. Joseph Saikon would like to come and speak. Did I say that correctly?
You did.
I appreciate the.
Yeah, 41 years of nobody being able to pronounce my last name correctly, so I just figured.
I appreciate it.
Putting the phonics on there, phonetics works. My name is Joseph Saikon, or Joe Saikon. I'm a longtime Dearborn resident. I have two young sons, ages six and eight, in this district as well. We love our school. We love our principal. We love the teacher. They have many great friends. We love most of the parents. Most of the parents are great. So back in December, when they started putting together the V I P committee to look at possibility for raising funds for a number of issues, including infrastructure, which includes security, I hopped right up and volunteered and was accepted on there. And we spent many months working hard on that to come up with a list that confirmed a list, that confirmed a list of the many repairs, issues, maintenance, et cetera, upgrades that need to be done in order for the schools to be at baseline and then possibly start to expand a little bit, right? So I, when I started having children, I stayed in Dearborn because I love it here so much. I would say that it's kind of disappointing that I have not heard too much about the recent school shooting down in Texas, right? It upsets me greatly. I will tell you that because of evil in this world, that we will use one of our strengths here in Dear, people will use one of our strengths here in Dearborn against us, and that would be diversity. One of the reasons why I love this city is because of the diversity. I love it. It's great. There are parts of this world, parts of this country, parts of the state where somebody would look at our district, at our city, and have following intentions for that. Because of that, I have doubled down in my resolve to make sure that we are not waiting a year, two years, three years to put together a plan to make sure that we have the kids' safety, internal and external, in place for situations ranging from possible school shootings to bullying situations to somebody laying hands on somebody. But specifically here today, I'm going to talk a little bit about the school shooting situation just because there's a range of solutions out there that exist in all different price points. One of the concerns that was raised at the last meeting on why we are not putting something up for a bomb proposal, for some sort of funding for a lot of this, is due to taxes. I would like to remind everybody that listens that there's no such thing as a city anywhere in the U S where your property values are high, but your schools are bad. And safety is definitely on parents' minds, and it's going to be one of the things that attracts people to a particular district.
I need to ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
Okay. So I would just encourage the district. If, I know there's going to be a study to take place, if nothing else, give some consideration to those items that are safety-oriented sooner rather than later. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last, Ms. Fay Nema would like to come to speak to the board about school safety.
Good evening, board trustees.
Good evening, board trustees, Dr. Maleko, president. To the gentleman before me, we actually invested 3.2 million in our CAREHOC system. I ask you to research that a little bit further. It's supposed to be a state-of-the-art system. And understand the limitations and shortcomings and deficiencies that we've had in that system to date. With the Texas school shooting being top of mind for me as a parent, I'll start, I'll start by recounting a 911 call initiated by a 10-year-old from Robb Elementary. In the transcript obtained by the New York Times, the student pleaded with the dispatcher, "There are a lot of bodies. I don't want to die. My teacher is dead. My teacher is dead. Please send help, send help for my teacher." As we send our thoughts and prayers to the families and loved ones of the 19 children and two teachers who lost their lives in Uvalde, Texas, I can't help but reflect on the difficult path I've encountered in engaging our administration on the topic of student safety. Being a concerned parent, reaching out to the administration and since the lockdown on March 16th at Fortston High School, I stood before this body on multiple occasions to convey concerns regarding the failure of the CAREHOC system. To my dismay, it took over two months for the administration to heed my, my request for a meeting. Now that I have met with the administration, just this past week, I still have pressing concerns with respect to the robustness and effectiveness of the overarching school strategy with respect to safety. A moment of silence is warranted, Superintendent, but I ask that we take the necessary steps as a district to prioritize student safety in a long-term, sustainable strategy. As I reassess my exchange, I am left wondering if it took more than two months for the administration to begin to acknowledge a parent's concern which is of the utmost priority, that of the safety of our children. How long does it normally take to address the long list of grievances from the teachers, staff, students, and parents? Whether those grievances relate to the malfunctioning of the CAREHOC system or the missing stall doors and lack of privacy in ports and bathrooms, or the fact that the district is egregiously top-heavy, or the minimal allocation of much-needed resources to teachers who are student-facing, or the self-inflicted teacher shortage caused by removing teachers from the classroom and placing them in admin positions, or the special needs students who feel they have been left behind, and finally, the district culture which now appears to be broken and not conducive to learning. When I listen to these grievances, I ask myself, do these voices represent a loud minority, or do these concerns in fact resonate with a silent majority? To that end, I have received feedback that teacher, staff, and parental input has not been ascertained, and although this board.
Thank you.
Is reassuring community members of the impartial nature of the review. I'm just going to finish the sentence. There is an overall lack of trust in the board's performance evaluation process. To that end, and to best assess the sentiments across the district, I urge this board to solicit the services of a third-party H R firm to conduct an independent evaluation of the district's leadership and related culture prior to June 30th. Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause).